Good evening. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the Lexington County School District III Board of Trustees Regular Monthly Meeting. It is Tuesday, October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, six o'clock. We are meeting in the Staff Development Room of the Lexington III District Office. All board members are present except Ms. Etheridge. I welcome you all and thank you for attending. At this time, I call our meeting to order. I would like to recognize two students who attend Batesburg-Leesville Middle School. Aiden Waters will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Yates Taylor, who will lead us in prayer. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together tonight to make decisions that guide our school. Please bless our teachers, students, and leaders with wisdom, patience, and kindness. Help us all to learn and grow each day, both in knowledge and in character. May everything we do honor you and make our schools a place where everybody, everyone can shine. Amen.
We appreciate your participation in our meeting. Thank you very much. At this point, we are on item one point four, Approval of Agenda. You receive the agenda in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. The agenda is approved. Item one point five, Approval of Minutes for September the ninth, twenty twenty-five, Regular Board Meeting. These minutes were also in your packet. Without objection, we will approve the minutes as presented. The minutes for September the ninth, twenty twenty-five, Regular Board Meeting are approved. We will move on to two point zero, Recognition. Item two point one, SCSBA Boardmanship Institute Training Certificate of Achievement, Presented to Craig Kaufman by Mrs. Taylor.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow Board of Trustees Members. This evening, we are celebrating Mr. Kaufman for reaching Level Four of the South Carolina School Boards Association's Boardmanship Institute. The South Carolina School Boards Association established the Boardmanship Institute in nineteen eighty-two to offer a year-round training curriculum focused on leadership skills for board members across South Carolina on state and national issues. There are six levels of recognition, so Mr. Kaufman, you're very close to the finish line, but this evening, we present to you a special pen and a certificate from the South Carolina School Boards Association, so congratulations on your achievement.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and congratulations, Mr. Kaufman. We will move on to three point zero, Consent. Item three point one, Financial Report by Mrs. Roden.
Hello. You've got your September information in your packet. The noteworthy item for September, we really didn't have much, but we did receive an insurance check for sixty-two thousand. We had a lightning strike and it did some damage, and we're going to take care of that. And the nature trail has been completed. We made our final payment on that, and Mr. Lee Partt said it's wonderful and great and everyone's going to enjoy it. They're going to do market where cross-country can run, and they'll have the signs and everything, so we're looking forward to being able to use the nature trail again. Did you have any specific questions about the financials for September? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Roden. Next, item three point two, Superintendent's Report by Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. Well, first, I would like to offer congratulations to Nicole Worski, our new Teacher of the Year. We know that she will do as proud as she goes on to compete for the twenty twenty-seven South Carolina Teacher of the Year. Again, we're just excited for her, and we're thankful that we were able to honor all of our Teacher of the Years, Teacher of the Year for each school at the last home football game. But I also want to thank all of our local businesses that helped make the Teacher of the Year banquet such a special occasion. We had over thirty groups of individuals and businesses that donated gifts, totaling over one hundred different gifts that we were able to share with our Teacher of the Year at each school, and so we're just thankful for our community's support. Recently, we had eight of our high school visual arts students that have competed in the South Carolina State Fair Art Competition, and so of our thirty different pieces of high-quality artwork that were submitted, eight were selected to be on display. So now, if you go to the State Fair, you'll see our students' artwork on display. Ella Campbell also had a piece that placed third overall in the senior two-dimensional art division, so we're proud of all of our high school art students. Mid-Carolina has always been a very good partner of our school district, and once again, they have awarded Bright Ideas Grant to two of our teachers, Laura Bishop and Adina McCullough, middle school teachers who worked together, partnered, to co-teach an idea entitled Turning Stories into Structures with 3D Printing. So they were recently awarded a one thousand dollar grant from Mid-Carolina Let's Co-op. And if you remember, last year, we had three teachers receive a total of twenty-nine hundred dollars in Bright Idea Grants as well. For last year, Election Three received seven awards for excellence in publication and electronic media from the South Carolina chapter of the National School Public Relations Association for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. I know that's really a long title, but again, Mackenzie heads all our PR efforts up, and again, she has been recognized in several areas as she has promoted our school district. And those areas include our communication plan, our calendar design, two different awards for our Panther Press Newsletter, the Election Three website, and two awards for photography. Again, thank you for always putting our best foot forward and showing all the great things that are going on in our district, Mackenzie. And again, we're proud of the recognition that you have earned for yourself and for our district through your organization. Our Panther Players will present the musical Bright Star in November. Opening night will be Thursday, November the sixth, at seven thirty, with two subsequent shows on Saturday, November the eighth, at two and seven thirty, and then a final mat day on Sunday, November the night, at three p.m. We're looking forward to another fine performance from our Panther Players. Just a few items I want to highlight that occurred since our last school board meeting. Our middle school students experienced the Be Pro, Be Proud Truck on September the fifth. And I know we've talked about this before, but just kind of in review, the Be Proud, Be Pro Truck is a custom-designed, military-grade, double-expandable semi-trailer and truck, and it's loaded down with simulations for the skilled trades that include welding, truck driving, heavy equipment operation, diesel technician, lineman, and several other things. So get a chance to experience that. Trying to operate heavy equipment in a simulation can sometimes be a little bit difficult, but it is exciting for our students to be able to get in and experience what it's like to be in these professions. Our high school seniors had the opportunity to complete college applications to Landry University, Middlelands Tech, and USC Aiken on September the twelfth. We had representatives from each of these universities come in and help them do so. Our high school inducted twenty-nine new members to the Beta Club on September the twenty-ninth. This brings a total of seventy-one Beta Club members at the high school, and if you put the high school and the middle school together, it's almost two hundred Beta Club members we have between the two schools. Thirteen of our high school teacher cadets participated in Teacher Cadet Day at the University of South Carolina on October the sixth. They spent the day learning about the teaching profession and also spent the day with South Carolina Teacher of the Year Cory Beanbow. He had nothing but positive things to say, or great things about our teacher cadets and just how wonderful they were during that whole day. The new big green tractor was delivered to our Agriculture Department on September the seventeenth. They were excited to receive that. Our high school chorus partnered with Presbyterian College Vocal Select Group and performed a concert honoring America's American music called America's Song and Stories on October the eighth. This was a dual performance. They performed in the Fine Arts Center, and they also did another performance on the campus of Presbyterian College as well. Our Mary-on-Bill Batesburg-Leesville Fire Department visited our primary school last week for Fire Prevention Week, and of course, there was lots of excited primary school students looking forward and enjoying that big red fire truck powered out front. A few things that are going to be occurring in the next month. Our homecoming festivities started yesterday, and we know that that will culminate on Friday night with our home football game against ALA Academy at seven thirty. National School Lunch Week is this week as well, ending on the nineteenth. This year's theme is Taste of the World, and each day, our wonderful dedicated food service staff will be featuring a special menu item for the cafeteria for our students and staff to try. October is also Hispanic Heritage Month. Schools will celebrate in a different variety of ways and activities that honor the rich cultures and traditions of our Hispanic Americans, and the middle school will have a special celebration this Friday at eight fifteen. Panther Parent Night will be at the elementary school on October the twenty-first, from five thirty to seven. JRTC will have a flag retirement ceremony on Friday, October the twenty-fourth, at nine at the flagpole. If you know of anyone, if you have any flags that need to be retired, you can take those to the high school office, and they'll make sure those are retired in the respectful way that we do that in America. Red Ribbon Week will be October the twenty-seventh through the thirty-first. We have a couple veterans programs coming up. The middle school program will be on Wednesday, November the fifth, at nine a.m. in the gym, and the elementary school program will be on Wednesday, November the thirteenth, at six thirty in the Fine Arts Center. So a lot of great things that are going to be occurring and lots to celebrate for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Atkinson. Next, four point zero, Public Participation. Any cards, Mrs. Carey? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is five point zero, Information Items. Item five point one, School Board Member Continuing Education. Debriefing the Twenty Twenty-five SCSBA Risky Business Conference by Board Members.
There were three of us who attended the conference in Hilton Head, and our keynote, and Mr. Lee Partt, he's here, and then our keynote speaker was John Michael Keys, and we've heard him here in this district before. He's the father of Emily Keys. His daughter Emily was the only one of the six hostages in the two thousand and six Platte Canyon, Colorado hostage situation who did not survive. Her final text was to her father, and it was, "I love you guys." And after the crisis, her parents founded the I Love You Guys Foundation, and that foundation has given us those familiar crisis procedures of hold, secure, lockdown, and lockout, evacuate, and shelter, but they have now begun to add another section, and this section is called Standard Unification. And I was really quite impressed with this. It's a model to reunite the parents and the students, and it involves a specific site, a parental check-in with ID, and an orderly student release with a perforated tear-part card, so that the parent to pick up fills out those sections and you tear it apart. So they use one to get the child, but then the school has a copy of the other, so you know exactly, and it has a destination on it, so you know who picked them up and where they're going. But anyway, so that, it's always really good to hear that program, but they're taking it a little bit further even. We also listened to several presentations on cybersecurity. We heard Tim Larkin from SLED and Shelley Heflin from KIND, which is a cyber risk program, and they discussed how we can prevent an infiltration of our network, because in reality, the question these days is not if your network's going to be infiltrated, it's going to be when, unless you have preventive measures in place. And the important thing is they're in place, they're updated, and they're maintained, because if you don't keep up your updates, there's a weak link, and they just, they, what we were explaining, the way it was explained to us is that they simply, they had a name for them, they simply troll, and they troll any pretty, pretty much all organizations till they just find a weak link, and that's where they infiltrate your, your network. So we were also told that the cost of recovery, once your infiltrate, once your network is infiltrated, can be up to at least about three point five million. So it's cheaper to keep it up and update it than it is to try to recover it.
Thank you so much for sharing, Ms. Carey. The next item of business is six point zero, Action Items. We will group items six point one, First Read and Approval of Policy KF, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center; items six point two, First Read and Approval of Policy Administrative Rule KF-R, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center; and items six point three, First Read and Approval of File KF-E, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center; files KF through E one through KF through E eight, presented by Mrs. Taylor.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Board of Trustees Members. As you mentioned, Policy KF, Administrative Rule KF-R, and files KFE one through KFE eight all deal with public use of our Fine Arts Center here in Lexington III. This policy is applicable administrative rule, and all of the files were last updated in January of two thousand and twenty, and the proposed revisions really just reflect some necessary contractual updates and price adjustments. As you know, we have really upgraded our Fine Arts Center in recent years with such things as new carpet, a new projector, a new sight curtain, new lighting options, new furniture in the lobby, new digital signage, and a beautiful new grand piano, just to name a few of our improvements. So we really did feel like the timing was right for us to go ahead and update our Fine Arts Center rental agreements. You have copies of the proposed revisions in your board packet, but I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. If you do not have any questions, we are seeking first read and approval of Policy KF, Administrative Rule KFR, and files KFE one through eight.
Any questions for Mrs. Taylor?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we give first read and approval of Policy KF, Administrative Rule KF-R, and Policy KFE one through eight as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion from Mr. Kaufman and a second from Mrs. Burgess for first read and approval to Policy KF, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center; Policy Administrative Rule KF-R, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center, and File KF-E, Public Use of the Lexington Fine Arts Center; Files KFE one through KFE eight as presented. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give first read and approval to Policy KF, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center; Policy Administrative Rule KF-R, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center; and File KFE, Public Use of the Lexington III Fine Arts Center; Files KFE one through KFE eight as presented. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We will group items six point four, Second Read and Approval of Policy BE, Board Meetings; and items six point five, Second Read and Approval of Policy BEA, Live Streaming Board Meetings, Presented by Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board Members. I'll just bring this to your attention as we discussed it last meeting for first reading. These are policies we need to update to get in line with current legislation that was passed this past summer, so there have been no changes to either of these policies since first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to give second read and approval to Policies BE and BEA as presented by the administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Burgess and a second from Mrs. Derrick for second read and approval to Policies BE, Board Meetings, and BEA, Live Streaming of Board Meetings as Presented by the Administration. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give second read and approval to Policies BE, Board Meetings, and BEA, Live Streaming of Board Meetings as Presented by the Administration. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Next, item six point six, Second Read and Approval of Policy JRA, Student Records, Presented by Dr. Bryant.
And just as with the other two, there have been no changes. This is just an update that we needed for clarification for our administrative staffs.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to give second read and approval to Policy JRA as presented by the Administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Burgess and a second from Dr. Gunner for first read and approval to Policy JRA, Student Records, as Presented by the Administration. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give second read and approval to Policy JRA, Student Records, as Presented by the Administration. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next, item six point seven, First Read and Approval of Policy GVC, Staff Compensation, Presented by Dr. Bryant.
Madam Chair, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for entertaining so many of these tonight. As I was working through them, they are very intricately linked, and in an effort to continually update our policies, it just made sense to keep these together. This first one, GVC, is again dictated by the legislative movement that happened over the summer in that we were given new dates of deadlines that districts have to abide by, so that is the reason that we are bringing forth this one, and it is recommended by the School Boards Association and was issued in January of two thousand and fifteen. This will be its first update.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we give first read and approval of Policy GVC, Staff Compensation, as Presented by our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bryant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Carey and a second from Mrs. Derrick for first read and approval to Policy GVC, Staff Compensation, as Presented by the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bryant. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give first read and approval to Policy GVC, Staff Compensation, as Presented by the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bryant. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is item six point eight, First Read and Approval of Policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensation, Presented by Dr. Bryant.
Yes, ma'am, there's very little change to this one, but it's basically what I'm calling a twin policy. GCB is a policy twin to GBC, and we just needed that language to match, so very little changes. Again, this policy was issued in two thousand and fifteen and has never been updated.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we give first read and approval of Policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensation, as Presented by our Administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Carey and a second from Dr. Gunner for first read and approval to Policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensation, as Presented by the Administration. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give first read and approval to Policy GCB, Professional Staff Contracts and Compensation, as Presented by the Administration. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will group items six point nine, First Read and Approval of Policy GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences; and items six point ten, First Read and Approval of Policy Administrative Rule GCC, Employee Leaves and Absences. rule GCC employee leaves and absences presented by Dr. Bryant.
Again, policy was issued in January of 2015. This came from the School Boards Association as well, just to, again, alignment with all these other policies that are similar to meet the needs of the Educator Assistance Act. In addition, our administration would like to recommend that we remove language devoted to the COVID-19 pandemic as that is now obsolete. So I thought that was just another little effort we could to clean it up a little bit. And same with the administrative rule, those same issues exist there.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Bryant? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to give first reading approval to GCC and administrative rule, GCC dash R.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Gunner and a second from Mrs. Burgess for first reading approval to policy GCC employee leaves and absences and policy administrative rule AR GCC employee leaves and absences. Here and none. The question is to give first reading approval to policy GCC employee leaves and absences and policy administrative rule GCC employee leaves and absences. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have item six point eleven, first reading approval of policy administrative rule GCC GDCR two COVID-19 related leave employee leaves and absences.
Again, Madam Chair, this is just, we're making the recommendation that we remove this policy altogether. Again, it is, has become outdated, thank goodness.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to give first reading approval to administrative rule AR GCC slash GDC slash R two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Burgess and a second from Mrs. Derrick for first reading approval to policy administrative rule GCC GDC dash R two COVID-19 as presented. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give first reading approval to policy administrative rule GCC GDC R two COVID-19. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next, item six point twelve, first reading approval of file GCC dash E employee rights and responsibilities under the Family and Medical Leave Act, FMLA, presented by Dr. Bryant.
Thank you. This is our final one, and this is also a COVID-19 related piece of information that needs to be removed.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to give first reading approval to file GCC slash E employee rights and responsibilities under the Family and Medical Leave Act as presented by the administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Derrick and a second from Mrs. Burgess for first reading approval to file GCC dash E employee rights and responsibilities under the Family and Medical Leave Act as presented by the administration. Any discussion? Here and none. The question is to give first reading approval to file GCC dash E employee rights and responsibilities under the Family and Medical Leave Act as presented by the administration. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you for your patience. I appreciate y'all.
Next on the agenda is seven point zero, executive session. Item seven point one, discuss discussion of personnel legal and contractual matters, including the superintendent's evaluation. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session for discussion of personnel legal and contractual matters, including the superintendent's evaluation.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Carey and a second from Dr. Gunner to go into executive session for discussion of personnel legal and contractual matters, including the superintendent's evaluation. All those in favor of the motion to go into executive session for the discussion of personnel legal and contractual matters, including the superintendent's evaluation, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We are now in executive session.
Without objection, we are returning from executive session to public session eight point zero on the agenda. We are now in public session. Next on the agenda is eight point one, any action as required or items from executive session.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the administration's recommendation to offer professional letters of agreement and coaching supplemental agreements as stated on page one for the school year 2025-2026.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Gunner and a second from Mrs. Carey to accept the administration's recommendation to offer professional letters of agreement and coaching supplemental agreements as stated on page one for the school year 2025 through 2026. Any discussion? Here and now, the question is the approval of the motion to accept the administration's recommendation to offer professional letters of agreement and coaching supplemental agreements as stated on page one for the school year 2025 through 2026. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, after reviewing Dr. Ashley Atkinson's report on the district's progress and hearing the board members' comments this evening regarding Dr. Atkinson's performance, I move that we conclude as a board that Dr. Atkinson receive an overall exemplary evaluation for the 2024-2025 school year. I move that as a result of Dr. Atkinson's overall exemplary evaluation, that his contract be extended by one year through June 30th, 2028. I move as a result of his overall exemplary evaluation that he receive a four percent increase in his salary effective July 1st, 2025. I further move as a result of his overall exemplary evaluation that he receive an additional two percent increase in his annual annuity.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Burgess and a second from Mrs. Derrick. The motion is, after reviewing Dr. Ashley Atkinson's report on the district's progress and hearing the board members' comments this evening regarding Dr. Atkinson's performance, I move that we conclude as a board that Dr. Atkinson receive an overall exemplary evaluation for the 2024-2025 school year. I move that as a result of Dr. Atkinson's overall exemplary evaluation, that his contract be extended by one year through June 30th, 2028. I move as a result of his overall exemplary evaluation that we receive a four percent increase in his salary effective July 1st, 2025. I further move that as a result of his overall exemplary evaluation, that he receive an additional two percent increase in his annual annuity. Any discussion? Here and now, the question is the approval of the motion. After reviewing Dr. Ashley Atkinson's report on the district's progress and hearing the board members' comments this evening regarding Dr. Atkinson's performance, I move that we conclude as a board that Dr. Atkinson receive an overall exemplary evaluation for the 2024 through 2025 school year. I move that as a result of Dr. Atkinson's overall exemplary evaluation, that his contract be extended by one year through June 30th, 2028. I move as a result of his overall exemplary evaluation that he receive a four percent increase in his salary effective July 1st, 2025. I further move as a result of his overall exemplary evaluation that he receive an additional two percent increase in his annual annuity. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is nine point zero adjourned. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Derrick and a second from Mrs. Burgess to adjourn. Those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Meeting adjourned.